Order, uh, could you rise for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, um, right. Okay, our, um, minutes, uh, to consider and act upon the minutes of September twenty first, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Nancy.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now.
I'm, yep, I'm trying. I just, my phone keeps kicking me off or muting me. Yep, second, aye.
Okay.
(laughing)
All right, the motion passes. Okay. Okay, item number four, uh, the racial equity and justice task force appointments. Uh, to hear and consider and act upon the following appointments for the racial equity and justice task force. A, Stephen Bogan, uh, Black Rock Turnpike, uh, Douglas Benel of Fairfield Beach Road, Annie Dingra of Shady Hill Road, Karen Lynch of Eastfield Terrace, Sonia Narcisse of Lucille Street, Alexandra Accampo of South Pine Creek Road, Tamisha Powell Dunmore of Kings Highway, Jason Sherard of Rosedale Street, and Sandra Tolman of Somerset Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
So I'd just first like to say, I hope everyone was able to call in. I know some people had, uh, issues calling in, but all the, m- the majority of the candidates were a- said they were able to call in, um, and, uh, introduce themselves and answer any questions. Uh, Nancy and Gina put a lot of time and effort into, um, uh, calling all of the candidates who reached out and then, uh, gave me a list, and I made phone calls, um, to all of the list and some others that I thought would be helpful, and, um, I th- think we've come, uh, together with a very nice diverse and, um, um, cross-section of people who I think can, were, are going to have a, a very productive and hopefully, um, discussions that will allow our community to have these tough discussions, which we've said in the past, and move us in a, in a, in a positive direction altogether. And I'll open it up for any comments or questions from the board.
I would love to make the comment, um, which really echoes what you just said, Madam First Select Woman, which is, um, we spent, Gina, Love Lo and I, the co-chairs of this task force, spent a lot of time talking with dozens of candidates, and, you know, the, the really satisfying thing is that we really could have created this task force officially several times over with qualified candidates, with really passionate people from diverse backgrounds, from really, uh, points of view that differed, but where we were all aligned unilaterally is the need for this kind of task force and to have some of the difficult discussions that we know, uh, lie ahead, and, and we had some, the beginnings of some very meaningful discussions, and ultimately landed with this, uh, group of nine people, which, as you mentioned Brenda, was, um, you had spoken to some people and we had gotten input, but, um, just could say lots of really wonderful things about each of these candidates, or now, um, hopefully official task force members, Steven and Douglas and Indy and Karen and Sonia and Alex and Tamisha, Jason, Sandra, all bring something, um, really important to the table, and, uh, look forward to continuing the discussion with them officially, but also to remind people that unless we have complete community buy-in, this task force, uh, won't be able to be effective in its work, and so look forward to working with anyone that's interested, um, to, to come out. These meetings will be public, and, um, so just thank you to these nine very qualified thoughtful humans, and I look forward to getting to work with each of you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, this is Tom. I'd like to, first of all, thank everybody for their service, and as Nancy indicated, I'd like to thank all the people who expressed an interest in being on the committee in reviewing all the backup documentations, the resumes, the questionnaires. Uh, it's certainly a, a very diverse and qualified group of people to take on this difficult challenge, uh, and I look forward to, uh, getting the output of the committee at date certain in the future, and I'd just really like to thank everybody for, um, stepping up to do this.
Thank you, Tom. Um, (cough) would any of the members, uh, like to speak, uh, the who were able to get on the pho- phone call? Is, is Steven on the call? Douglas?
Uh, I am on the call, and I just want to, you know, thank the, uh, co-chairs for giving me this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to not just having the discussions, but actually doing the work and, and providing the town with a blueprint to really address these issues. So I'm really delighted to be part of this, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Douglas. Indy, are you on the line? Indy?
(cough) Uh, this is Sandra Tolman. I, I just wanted to say the same thing, uh, just, you know, to thank you for the opportunity, and, um, I'm just looking forward to, to, um, making some kind of meaningful change and through discussions and listening, which, um, is just as important as anything else, so, um, just looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, Sandra. Is, um, Karen Lynch on the line? Sonia? Alexandra?
Hi, thanks very much, Madam First Select Woman, um, and the board. I really appreciate this opportunity. I love Fairfield. This is an incredible town, and I feel very privileged and honored, um, to have been selected to be on this task force, and you can rest assured that, um, I will do my best to, um, continue to make positive strides, have candid and kind and thoughtful conversations, um, and serve this town not only for my son, but all of our neighbors as well. Much gracias, and I promise to do my best.
Well, thank you so much.
Hey, we appreciate your service.
Brenda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Hi, it's Sonia. I'm sorry, I had to figure out how to get off and...
Oh, hi Sonia.
Sorry about that. Uh, I just wanted to, um, say thank you, um, for putting this task team together, um, and that I'm honored and humbled to be part of it, and as I mentioned before, I'm, um, I applaud the town's efforts for wanting to put a task team together like this, so I look forward to serving.
Thank you very much, Sonia. We look forward to having you. Um, Nancy, this is Annie Dingra. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, this is Annie Dingra. I'm extremely grateful to be, um, appointed.
The number you have dialed has not been recognized. Please try again.
Welcome to My One Number. Muted. The recording has started.
With the task force. I look forward to, uh, work with everybody on the team, and, um, that's it. I just thank you very much.
Awesome. Then, well, thanks so much for stepping up. We really do appreciate it.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else on the task force who hasn't, um, spoken yet, who's on the line?
I know Karen Lynch was trying to jump in. Karen, were you able to deal with the mute situation?
I know.
Well, I just, on, on Karen, you know, not on her behalf, but just to say that I'm sorry she can't, um, speak out, but, you know, I want to welcome her and, and all of you who are on this call.
And me too. I, we had a lovely conversation, um, Karen, and she's very energetic and, um, positive, so I think she's gonna bring a whole bunch of positivity (laugh) to the task force.
Hey, I think I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Nancy, thank you. I'm (laugh), I missed the star six, so if y'all, if y'all knew me, you'd know that I was like, you know, ready to throw my iPhone across the room. So, anyway, (laugh) thank you for your patience with me, and, um, Brenda, thank you for, for those words. You know, I won't, I won't talk more. I'm excited to be here and grateful and, um, and, and just proud of the town for, um, putting together a committee like this, and, and happy that Nancy and Gina are taking the lead on it, and, um, anyway, just look forward to all of it because it's so, such important work.
Well, thank you very much, Karen. We really appreciate you stepping up. And your enthusiasm too. We could all, we could all use a boost.
Of course, of course.
Of enthusiasm. You always like, you always like that. Well, if there's no further comment, um, um, I say we, uh, put it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. Woo-hoo, congratulations. And, uh, we look forward to the work you're all going to be doing, and the, and Nancy, we look forward to you and Gina leading the task force. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Take care. Thank you. Um, item number five, um, our, uh, Chief McCarthy and Deputy Chief, uh, Karen Dunn are presenting, um, requires, uh, this item requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the fire chief, whereas in the best interest of the town of Fairfield to expend a total of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars to purchase eight automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, and two cardiac compression devices, CCDs, fifty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-three sixty-four of said project costs to be funded by a grant available under FEMA Assistance Fire, Fire Grant, AFG, two thousand nineteen program, a ten percent match from the town of Fairfield, is required at five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and now therefore be resolved that Brenda L. Cupchik, First Select Woman, be hereby authorized to accept in the name of and on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a grant in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, and further resolve that the First Select Woman is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to sign and execute any and all necessary documents to secure said grant, and furthermore resolve that five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars thirty-six cents is hereby appropriated to fund said project costs to be transferred from the FY twenty-one fire department operating funds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Discussion, questions?
So do we have the fire chief with us?
I have, uh, Karen Dunn, Deputy Chief, in, in the room, actually.
Hello, Chief Dunn, how are you? Quick question for you. Um, were these defibrillators, were they in the budget for this fiscal year?
No, they, no, they weren't. Um, we, uh, normally, we were going to have to, uh, maybe...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you get a little closer to the phone? My apologies. Yeah. Thanks.
Uh, no, sir, they weren't in the budget because, um, what we would have done was just had to buy maybe one piece this year, and next year we would have put, uh, one of the cardiac compression devices in the capital outlay request, so, uh, this way, this year, instead of buying a couple of AEDs and not being able to buy a cardiac compression device, for that same amount of money, we're able to, uh, exponentially, um, you know, get more equipment that we will not need to put in for in the next, uh, year, few years.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any question?
I don't have any. No, I mean, these are obvious, this is important equipment. I don't think we need to understate that, or we can't overstate that enough, so...
Right, and as you both know, um, this is, some of this equipment helped save my son in August, so I am, uh, acutely aware of how incredibly important it is, and I hope this equipment will help save someone else's life in our town, or many lives in the coming years.
Amen.
Amen. All right, so we have no other questions. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Uh, item number six, Acting DPW Manager Brian Carey is presenting this item. He's on the line, um, this requires Board of Finance and RTM approvals to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Acting DPW Manager, whereas federal monies are available under the Community Development Progr- Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law ninety-three dash three eight three as amended, and whereas pursuant to Chapter one twenty-seven C in part, uh, Chapter one thirty of the Connecticut General Statutes, and the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disperse such federal monies to local municipalities, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the town of Fairfield to accept from the state three hundred thousand in order to undertake a community development block grant disaster recovery tranche two project Fairfield wastewater treatment plant hardening, and to execute an assistance agreement therefore should be offered, and whereas the funding is cognizant of the conditions and pre- prerequisites of the state assistance imposed by, uh, the Chapter thirty-one thirty, uh, I mean, the Connecticut General Statutes, and now and therefore be it resolved that, uh, Brenda L. Cupchik, First Select Woman, be and hereby is authorized to accept in the name of and on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a grant in the amount of three hundred thousand, and from the Commissioner of the Department of Housing, and further resolve that the First Select Woman is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to sign and execute any and all necessary documents to secure said grant as well as to provide additional information to ex- execute any other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for the state financial assistance if such agreement is offered, and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, and to act as authorized representative of the town of Fairfield. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Hey Brenda, I didn't quite get that. Could you read it again?
(laugh) That's very funny. (laugh) The answer is no.
Seconded.
Okay. (laugh) Oh, God. All right, um, uh, Brian, are you on the line if anyone has any questions?
Brian? Maybe he's on mute.
Could be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, uh, just, just on ways of background, uh, this is, this is additional money for the hardening project. We'd already received a grant of three point three million dollars. Um, the new lo- the new grant is three point six million dollars. Laura Pooley was able to get additional funding from the state.
Awesome. Go Laura.
Can I ask, uh, this is Tom, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
This is Br- yeah, Brian, this is the same project where we're, we're having some remediation issues. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So is this additional funding gonna go towards helping us with those remediation issues, and do we know yet what the, what the cost of those might be?
So, uh, we have the money encumbered in the budget for the remediation issues because we did have a pretty large contingency right now.
Okay.
Um, our contingency stands about half a million dollars with, included with this money. Um, so the remediation issues are being, um, addressed currently, um, so I'm hoping, um, again, that there will be no further, um, surprises on the project, and we'll be able to, uh, you know, hold on to the contingency that we have right now, which is, you know, for four and a half, uh, for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So if that's the case, then this three hundred dollars will just go directly to reduce the town's direct expense related to this project. Is that fair to say?
Uh, I think we'll probably end up finding, um, no, I think this will all be used on the project, um, we're s- we're about a third of the way done, um, and just what we've been running into at the site, uh, there's a lot of surprises as far as buried, um, debris, um, so I'm hoping that, uh, uh, yes, uh, it would reduce it, but, um, not completely optimistic that we won't need the additional funds based on, um, emerging issues.
So what, so that means that the project will probably cost, are, are you trying to message that the project will probably cost the town exactly what we thought it'll cost, and the additional monies that you're getting the three hundred here will go include, will also include the use of contingency to bring this project essentially on budget on the direct cost to the town? Is that fair to say then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that means that the project itself, if you have four hundred and fifty in contingency, that's the number you said, plus this three hundred, that means the project itself is about seven fifty more than the actual cost that we thought it was gonna be when we put it through, and it'll util- utilize the additional funds here plus the contingency. Fair?
No, so this, with this, uh, money, our project contingency will stand at four fifty.
With this money, got it.
So, uh, yes, correct.
How much was the contingency before this money then?
Uh, let me just look at the budget. It, it was twenty percent of the, let me just look at the spreadsheet in front of me.
Sure, thank you.
We did, we did...
It's gone over s- yeah, some, go ahead.
We did carry a large contingency number just because of the scope of the work and kind of the unknowns, um,
Yep.
at the time.
Understood.
And I just wanted to, to have you, Brian, reiterate that this is naturally occurring remediation needs, not anything else outside of, we found things that are naturally occurring in soil over decades.
No, it's, uh, not naturally occurring. It's the result of PCBs, um, and the best we can tell the source of that would probably be the plant, the operation of the plant before, you know, before nineteen eighty, um, when all the industries were basically discharging, um, you know, mi- wastewater,
Yes.
um, for process lines, but, yeah, it's not from, you know, it's, it's historic contamination, for sure.
Historic, that, that's what I, I, thank you for clarifying. I meant to reiterate historic, not related to current issues.
No, that is correct. Um, so, uh, Tom, the, the contingency on the budget was, uh, one million seventy-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, which was twenty percent of the total, um, project cost.
Right, so in essence, this is gonna be one point four million of the total project related to kind of unforeseen items. Included in that would be the historic remediation that you were just referring to.
That's correct.
Okay, which is a little over twenty percent, but again, this site hasn't been touched, and there was a lot of remediation that needs to be done, right?
Yeah, and I will say that this is not the only remediation that needs to be done. We're still, as part of the plant upgrade, they're gonna have to do a full-scale environmental investigation, um, as part of that project to identify other sources. Um, the remediation that's been completed to the, to date at the site has really only been in areas that are being excavated within the scope of the project.
Right, which is, your point being that it's gonna add, it could add a lot of potential cost to the bigger project, which will have to take place over the next few years as you rebuild it, correct?
It, it will, and it will be, there will be significant costs.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you for the clarification. That was helpful.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Well, um, I just wanna give a shout out to Laura for securing the extra three hundred thousand. It's really very helpful and good for her, um, and she's a benefit really to our community. I really appreciate her doing that. And, um, if no other questions, I, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we, where did I go? Okay. Item number seven, uh, is Assessor Ross Murray, who's in the room, and, um, our evaluation, uh, services Michael Fazio, I think, believe is on the line, um, and so this is to, uh, just to give a sense to you all, um, this is to get an update on the two thousand and twenty revaluation. We had Mr. Fazio, um, um, and Ross in a couple of weeks, I think, ago now, um, just to talk, maybe it was just Mr. Fazio. Um, we had a conversation, right, you were called in, um, to talk about, uh, just, you know, kinda where, where they were and how's it, how it was going, and what the process was, and we, uh, want to, um, send out information to the public so they better understand it, um, so they understand what it, how, how the methodology worked, and I thought it would be a good idea to give an update to both of you on the board, so I'm gonna hand it over to Ross, and Michael Fazio is also on the line, and I'll hand it over to both of them.
Thank you. Mike, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Good. Um, my name's Ross Murray. I'm the assessor for Fairfield, and as you know, we have Mike Fi- Fazio from Municipal Valuation Services on the call. Um, you're aware that the town is undergoing its five-year revaluation for the two thousand and twenty grant list. Last December, we selected Municipal Revaluation Services, a Fairfield-based, state-certified revaluation form, firm to perform the revaluation. Revaluations are mandated ba- mandated by state statute to be conducted once every five years, with data on the homes being verified once every ten years through either a site visit or data mailers. This revaluation does not include property verification, so we're not required to do site visits or data mailers, and in lieu of COVID, that's, um, a blessing. There's been no change in the requirement to complete the revaluation due to, due to COVID either, so, uh, we have to remain on schedule. We're mandated to perform a revaluation because our taxes are based on value, and the more valuable your property, the more your share of the tax burden will be. The purpose of reva- revaluation is to equalize those values because properties change at different rates. Some areas go up more, some may go down, and this is the reason to do the revaluations to re- uh, equalize between different property types, different areas, and so forth. It does not raise taxes overall, so the revaluation does not cause an increase in taxes. Taxes only go up if the amount of revenue needed from taxes goes up through the budget process. Individuals may see a tax increase or a decrease during the revaluation because of the equalization. Revaluation is the assessment of all the properties in town. You may be familiar with appraisals where you do, where, um, a home appraisal which looks at your house and compares it to, say, three to six comparables and comes up with a value. We don't do that because we're doing nearly twenty thousand properties at once, so we do a mass appraisal. Mass appraisals have been in use since the early nineteen hundreds. They're used throughout the country and internationally to value properties for tax purposes. The International Association of Assessors has developed standards and practices, and the state has, um, closely adopted those standards. In a mass appraisal, we develop a pricing model. The model's based on all valid sales for a period of time. Bless you. In this revaluation, we're looking at a period of time from January of nineteen through October first of twenty, and we expect to have in excess of twelve hundred, um, usable sales. The values, um, are then validated, we, we use those sales to develop the model, and then the model is validated using several indicators such as assessment ratio, price-related differential, coefficient of dispersion, coefficient of variation. These indicators are defined by the state and are in line with those of the International Association of Assessors, and again, they're used throughout the country and internationally. They're well-developed standards. We began the process earlier this year with residential properties. Coding was extensively verified for uniformity with the help of GIS. We made some changes to neighbor... We made some changes to neighborhoods. The valid sales were used in developing, developing the preliminary pricing model, and we will be adding in sales for the remainder of the year, once we're completed entering them, and we're about three weeks behind right now. The final changes will be made over the next two months, and we plan to publish values at the beginning of December. Every property owner will receive a notice. It'll tell them what the assessment was in twenty, for last year, and what the new value will be. It'll give them the opportunity to set an appointment, to meet with the revaluation company if they have any questions or concerns, and then if they still have an issue with their assessment, it'll advise them how to appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeal, which they have to do by February nineteenth of twenty one. Municipal valuation is also taking new street-level photos, and they're a little more than halfway complete in updating those images. And lastly, commercial properties are going through a similar process. That is a little bit delayed due to the governor's executive order extending income and expense forms, which are used to, um, to term, to gather information concerning those properties. Um, commercial properties, we do an income-based methodology as well as reviewing sales. Notices for the commercial properties will go out at the same time in early December. Um, I'll let Mike make a few comments now. Mike?
Oh, thank you, Ross. So, so Ross covered the highlights of the majority of the revaluation. Um, the sample size, we used about fifteen hundred sales in the, on the residential side, which includes condominiums, multifamily, and residential properties. And on the re- when we value the commercial properties, we use mostly income and expense data provided by property owners, and then we compared that to CoStar, which is like a commercial MLS system that covers, uh, the entire town of Fairfield and also reports on market indicators. Our analysis on the commercial, mm, I was speaking with my partner, Chris, who handles the commercial, uh, segmentation of the revaluation. He is estimating he'll be completed with his analysis by the end of next week, at which time, uh, both the commercial and the residential will sit down with Ross and go over our findings and kinda start a field review process, which should take one or two weeks. Uh, at that point, uh, when the field review is completed, we will then look to print the notices and send them out, most likely the week, uh, either before or after, uh, Thanksgiving. With, uh, the hearings being held during, uh, the month of December, and most likely one week in January in case people are on vacation around the holidays. Uh, we're gonna, we were talking about now with COVID, how we're gonna conduct hearings due to the fact we can't most likely do them in person, and we're playing with the technology where we're gonna offer either a Zoom or people who don't know how to use Zoom will offer a telephone option where we'll be able to give them a call and talk over the telephone about their concerns. Uh, we've used a telephone option in the past with elderly or disabled people or people who are out of state who can't get into the informal hearings, and it's worked well. So I expect that, uh, process to, uh, work well even during these times. If you have any, uh, additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them. The only thing I don't have is I don't have any numbers on specific properties or specific neighborhoods since the, the final numbers are not completed as of this time.
I do have a couple of questions. I don't know, I'll defer to Nancy if you wanna go first, since I've heard these presentations previously at the Board of Finance.
Um, I, I do have a couple of questions, and forgive me because I've been trying to do my homework to better understand this process and, and made some calls, uh, once the agenda came out. Um, so if you have answered this, perhaps I just need to hear it in a different way. Um, these questionnaires that I guess historically have gone out, why did you, and I, I know it's not required, what was the decision behind not sending out the questionnaires this year, and then in absence of that, um, if you're, you know, using building permits and things like that, how do you make up for that data difference, I guess?
So what you mean questionnaires, do you, are you, you're talking about the I and E questionnaires? The sales data questionnaires or the data mailer?
Where, when the, the homeowner who's made changes, info, Ross alluded to the fact that you weren't sending out these questionnaires.
Right, the questionnaire is, so you're in a, the revaluation cycle where it's just this, what they're calling a statistical update, where questionnaires are not required. So it was not part of the RFP process from the beginning, so that was not part of-
No, I understand that, so I guess my question is more for Ross then. Why, I'm curious then why that decision was made not to do it? If it goes back before your mandate?
Yeah, when we put the RFP together, we did not in- include them.
Right, and I'm asking why not?
We were keeping, keeping the cost down on the revale. That was, uh, that was the goal.
Okay, so it was a cost-saving measure not to include them? Do you feel that, given that, and that's a perfectly reasonable explanation, but then is there data that we won't have that a resident, I'm trying to think of this through from a resident's point of view, um, is there another way for, for, uh, for you to get that data then that might have been revealed in those questionnaires?
So this, this is Mike. I, I think that the, the data, a lot of the data we updated, so if a house was ever put for sale or had sold or ever was on the MLS, we scoured that information and updated a lot of the data already in the database for this revaluation. Um, also, during the informal hearing process, if people come in and say, okay, I don't have a garage, but you have us being charged for a garage, at that time, we would also be able to make those changes. And that happens a lot of times. People come in and say, well, we only have three bathrooms, we don't have four bathrooms, or we don't have a finished basement, and, uh, you know, at that point, we make those changes.
So then it's fair to say for the resident that the, the way that any information that they might have been able to reveal on the questionnaire, which now they won't because that didn't go out, the best recourse then is for them to, um, come in and ask for, you know, at the hearing. Is that true, or am I missing something?
Nancy, we, we always have residents coming in with, with questions about their card. And whenever somebody questions the, their valuation, that's the first thing we tell them is, review your card and make sure that the data that we have is accurate, because that's the number one reason that the assessment is, um, is not correct. So we, we gather that all the time, and as Mike said, we went through, you know, we, we watched the sales, we review all the listings on MLS as best we can. So I, I think, I, I won't say that data mailers would not have been useful, but I don't think they would have, um, made a significant difference in our evaluation.
Okay, I, you know, I agree with you, and, and as I said, cost-saving measures is a great answer. I was just, um, trying to understand if there was something that was, is missing in light of that, and you're saying that there's still that opportunity to, for people to, to come in and question if they have it and they can look at their card. So, um, I understand, I understand.
Yes, and I'll, I'll point out that the-
And then-
the information is available online if you go to the town's website. Vision Government Appraisals, VGSI hosts our data. The link is on the site, and you can review what, the information that we have on your, on your house.
Um, that is super helpful, and if I missed it already, it seems like that would be an amazing thing to, to add to your town updates, which are very informative and thorough. This would be a great thing for residents to know about, that you can go online and, and access that information. Just my own two cents.
Will do that. Did you have a second question, Nancy? The second part?
I think maybe it was answered in this, but if, if Tom could, if you wanna go ahead, and then if something comes back, I can jump in.
Sure. Thanks, gentlemen. That was a good, um, discussion on the, an explanation on the revaluation. Couple of quick questions. Um, as you know, or, or at least Ross, you know, that in the last number of months with COVID hitting, there's been the exodus from New York into Connecticut. And, uh, in talking with some real estate attorneys and, and real estate agents, it's been extraordinarily busy the next, the last few months, uh, including up in the Greenfield Hill area. Uh, what I wanted to know was, how current is the data that you use as of what date, um, to make sure that the town is getting the appropriate values as of the, this timeframe as opposed to, let's say, six months ago?
Well, we will use data through October first. That's our last data and to, we'll look at sales through. That's our cutoff. So we will, as I mentioned, we're finishing up entering the data of all the sales that have been recorded, and once that's completed, we'll turn it over to Mike, and he'll do, uh, his analysis of the last, you know, couple of months since the pricing model was, I won't say finally, it was built and tested and it was in pretty good shape, but we knew we needed to add in the last, um, several months through October first because of all this activity.
And I have to extend, um, um, to when we had our meeting and, and they assured me they would be updating it with current, um, sell, uh, selling houses, transfers and all of that, so, uh, it, Mike has definitely got on top of that.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I had presumed that would be the case. I just wanted to make sure. And I would assume it's the same with building permits, that that's all as of October first as well and the like? Or certificates of occupancy, et cetera?
Yeah, every year we, um, that's already been updated. Um, um, I distributed a list to my folks of all the COs. They're working on anything that's been CO'd first to finalize that, and then they'll be moving into
Yep.
new construction, additions and remodels next.
Great, and I know, and I'm not trying to jump the, go ahead, say.
The, we'll do those with a percent complete.
Right, right.
So if you fill out a, if you took out a, uh, new construction for a home in June and you're, you know, you're halfway through, we'll pick you up for fifty percent of that house.
Right, right. Question, uh, the next question, I know you won't be able to give me specifics, but I remember we did this. It, it was probably two evaluations ago, and there were massive differences in individual neighborhoods, um, which caused a fair amount of consternation by, uh, I, as you can imagine, the citizens of the ne- of those individual neighborhoods. You don't have that information available right now to know if there's a, a massive, uh, or, or large change in those neighborhoods at the present point in time. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the, we have not finished the model yet, so it would be premature to start putting percentages and changes out there.
Yeah, I, I would love to get, um, when are you gonna have that? Is that the end of this month? Cause I know you guys start crunching and, and get it all done. What's, what's the date on that? Because I think we'd, I would, you know, like the heads up if we're seeing neighborhoods that are getting, uh, significant differences as compared to the last evaluation.
I, I would say mid to late November.
Right.
Mike?
Okay.
Well, right, I, I would, yeah, probably the beginning to mid-November, we should, uh, have finalized numbers. So madam, for select women, can we get a report back out when that information's available, just so that we're cognizant of what the changes are around town? Um, particularly where there's large differences in individual neighborhoods as compared to past, the past evaluation?
Uh, absolutely. I mean, once it's, it's public and it's available, um, sure, of course. And, and the plan is, is for this, uh, as Mike was, uh, referring to earlier, to have meetings and to share information with the public so they understand the process.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I know from past experience, what's gonna happen is this is gonna go out, and yes, we'll have those meetings and all that, but, but we'll start to get inundated. I, I used to, when I was on the Board of Finance, should start getting phone calls because though we're talking about it and explaining the process, um, people do get confused and they also, if, if there's a large discrepancy, uh, as compared to past, they get a little bit of sticker shock, and I just think that, um, forewarned is, is, um, for us would be appropriate. That's all.
No, absolutely, and I'm expecting quite a large volume of phone calls to come to my office as well as, uh, Ross's office, so we'll be ready.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any additional questions? That was helpful, thank you. Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad, uh, I, you know, I was worried about it and I wanted to make sure that, you know, you both were up to speed and, um, got the same information I got when I had the meeting. Um, if there's not anything else, uh, thank you, Mr. Fazio for calling in. Thank you, Ross.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
You're off the hook, Ross. You get to leave. Enjoy your night. Hope you have a long night ahead of us.
Good night.
Tom, can you bring that?
Bye.
Uh, number eight, item, thank you, Ross. Item number eight is to consider an act upon tax-free funds as recommended by the tax collector, um, in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-six seventy-nine. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Nance?
Yep, sorry, muted. Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and the next item is to hear and consider an act uh, upon any other business which shall properly come before the meeting, uh, to hear an update on COVID nineteen. Um, I did pre- uh, prepare a, a de- I sent out a detailed, uh, update in my newsletter, um, which just basically talks about the cases we had at Ledlow. Uh, I held a press conference, uh, I think it's almost two weeks ago, um, or a little, almost two weeks ago, when we had learned about the initial cases. Um, I held that conference and, uh, posted on social media and sent out a newsletter, and, and for a number of reasons. I included the superintendent there and the emergency management team to drive home the point to families, um, to reiterate the responsibility that they have as parents and that their children have, uh, to our community at large to, um, follow the CDC guidelines and make sure everyone's following the rules. And so, um, I think it's been good since then. Obviously, we had a couple of hiccups in the beginning with Labor Day and university stuff, and then we had these gatherings that caused this, these spikes of numbers at Ledlow. Um, but I think, um, between the, the town and the school district, I think the message has been pretty clear. We have not heard of any more, uh, gatherings that we were hearing about that were causing those numbers. And for, actually, I did an interview with WICC this morning. We were talking about it, and the, the reporter or whatever you call them, um, you know, said, considering we have two high schools, three middle schools, and eleven elementary schools, we're actually doing pretty well. We, we, we knew cases would, would rise, you know, they were gonna come up, uh, when we, when kids started going back to school and universities opened and life became a bit more open, um, especially with the phase three coming online, that, you know, we were gonna see it, so we were trying to make sure that our community is aware of it. We had the police put up message boards around the town, the flashing boards, reminding people about mask-wearing and safety, and we're gonna be doing a PSA that's gonna go out, um, to, you know, just drive home the point. And so we're, we're trying really hard to, uh, encourage and remind, uh, people, and, but we are keeping in mind, um, the potential of, of utilizing the governor's, uh, executive orders, uh, should we be alerted to any more very large, um, uh, out-of-sector guidelines, uh, that happen in our town that we become aware of. So, um, other than that, all the details are in the newsletter, um, you know, the numbers and, uh, uh, contact tracing, uh, the number of people who had to be quarantined, uh, due to those numbers that happened at the high school. Um, and we did have a meeting with Fairfield University and Sacred Heart last week, uh, to just reiterate our shared goals and to get an update from them. Um, but there was a data dump on Friday that showed an increase, um, and that a lot of people got nervous about, but, uh, Sands posted a video on his, the Health Department's page that, um, it's a COVID nineteen data page, and that really, he explains why that number jumped up and because of the data dump. So if you have any questions from anybody, you can always refer them to that or our Health Department if you, you're- or our Health Department if you- you yourselves would like to take a look at it. It's very informative. I'm actually extraordinarily proud every day of how amazing our Health Department is and how hard they work, uh, for our town. They've just been really great. We should- we should all be very, uh, grateful that we have them. Um, I think that's it. Um, and to, um, I'm gonna also announce that, uh, Tree of Hope at Sherman Green was lit for the Pink Pledge this month. Um, um, and we're all aware of the background of the- the Tree of Hope and how the, uh, uh, Park and Recreation, uh, established a committee that chooses different, uh, organizations that light the tree for the month. And Mr. Taguito of Alzangeles pays for the lights and puts them on the tree. So this month, it's, um, in honor of Pink Pledge in support of breast cancer and breast health awareness. Um, it's a month-long, community-wide awareness and fundraising campaign to benefit the Norma Freem Breast Center, which has locations in Fairfield, New Haven, Bridgeport, and Trumbull. Funds raised through the Pink Pledge enable the center to continue to provide medical excellence and compassionate care to all women, regardless of their ability to pay. Uh, I hope our, uh, community and our Board of Selectmen will- will visit, uh, www.pinkpledge.org to learn more about the Pink Pledge and stop by the Sherman Green this month to see the tree, which will be lit pink all month as a symbol of hope for those who are currently going through breast cancer. The warriors who beat it and the families of those who lost their battle against the disease. Um, unfortunately, this year, we're not able to do our traditional walk together, which is always a lot of fun and- and exciting and- and it's a nice way to raise awareness and for us all to be together. But that doesn't mean that our community can't step up and still contribute, uh, to this important cause. They do really do amazing work, and they help so many women who can't afford, uh, the help. And it's- it's really an amazing organization. So I hope you'll spread the word through social media and, um, and- and with your friends or through email that it's still important to donate to this important organization. And if there's any other, um, is there any questions on any of that?
Nope.
I don't. Thank you for the update.
Okay, and so I'm going to now make a motion, uh, to go into executive session on items ten and eleven. Um, one item is, um, uh, Attorney Richan Aiken to present an item, and Town Attorney will also be on the call. And the next item is to, um, speak to our HR Director regarding, um, and Attorney Baldwin regarding, um, a session, a private executive session on the voluntary early retirement incentive plan update. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion that we move into executive session.
Um, I'll second it, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, if there's something that we discuss in executive session and then it becomes clear that it is appropriate for public discussion, do we then come back to public discussion? Or does it have to potentially become an item, agenda item down the line?
Um, I'm-
Because I know that there was a- I personally received a lot of calls about, um, item number eleven on the agenda. And people saw that was private executive session, and I know that there was hope that some of this could be made public. So do you- I just wanna know how to-
Well, I don't know. Uh, Attorney Baldwin could speak to how we put something else on the agenda. I just do wanna, um, uh, reiterate, we had a full public meeting on this last week with the RTM. Tonight, we are having another one where the public can, um, listen in and- and on all the questions from the RTM. Um, and I believe the Pension Board and the Board of Finance are holding a joint meeting, even though neither one of them have a vote, um, on the item. Um, they are gonna be holding a joint meeting, and there will also be subcommittees of the RTM and then a vote at the end of October. So there is quite a few meetings that the public can hear, um-
Perfect.
Questions. So I think that should probably suffice.
Yep, and I think that's good information for the public, and there are plenty of opportunities. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that.
Awesome. Thank you, Nance. Um, okay, so, uh, Tom put a motion. Um, do we have a second to go into executive session?
Yep, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, we are back in pr- a public session. Do I- have a motion to come back into public session?
No moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we, um, I'm going to make a motion on item number ten, uh, to accept the recommendations of the Town Attorney. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And, uh, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Have a good night.